Let's call to order a special meeting of the Glendale City Council for April 2, 2013. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the April 2, 2013, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, March 28, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And at item one is approval of minutes for the special city council meetings of March 5 and March 19, 2013.
Mr. Ochoa.
This is for approval of minutes at item one?
Yeah, do I have a motion? I'll move minutes, so I can...
May the minutes stand approved as submitted.
And at item two is a public hearing, Director of Community Development, continued from 3/26/13 regarding proposed development of a five-story, 315 apartment units project, Site A, to be located at 607 to 633 North Central Avenue, 317 to 321 West Doran Street, and 314 to 324 Pioneer Drive, and a five-story, 192 apartment units project, Site B, to be located at 526 to 540 North Central Avenue, 200 to 214 West Doran Street, and 527 to 531 North Orange Street. At 2A is a motion approving Stage One Design Review for Site A, subject to comments and conditions of approval. And at 2B is motion approving Stage One Design Review for Site B, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. I...this question is directed to the city attorney. I have a leasehold interest in a office in the 500 North Central Avenue building. It is a term of...there's approximately two and a half years left on the term. Does that fact require me to recuse myself from any deliberations?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Najarian, with respect to leasehold interests, if a project or a particular approval would affect the leasehold rights, if it would change the uses, if it would change what could be done on the property, not the property that's subject to approval this afternoon, but to your property that you have a leasehold interest, it could. I think the only one of the factors under the FPPC guidelines that might be affected is the value of any sublease rights that you hold. So if you have the right to seek approval from your landlord to sublease that property, the issue then becomes what is the value of those sublease rights? And I cannot definitively say that it doesn't have an impact on your sublease rights. I mean, absent an appraisal which says it wouldn't impact that value to you, I couldn't say definitively that it doesn't impact that. And so, always exercising caution, I always urge a caution in this situation and would recommend that you recuse, but I, you know, that's my recommendation because that one particular factor as it relates to the value of the sublease rights that you might have under your lease. Now, if you don't have the rights to seek your landlord approval to do that, then that becomes a non-issue, and the other factors probably wouldn't be triggered by your participation in this project.
I do have the right to sublease, and it does require the landlord's approval for any subleases that are issued. Therefore, with that analysis, is it your recommendation I recuse myself?
Absent more information that we don't have, yes, I would recommend that you not participate in this particular item.
Okay. With that, with that analysis, I will recuse myself because I have a law office within 500 feet of the projects.
All right, thank you, Mr. Najarian. I'll soon be opening the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak from the public? You can fill out cards in the back of the room to speak on the item.
How far is...
I don't know. 500 feet, it's presumed material?
500 feet?
Probably not.
I don't think so. Did you have a cousin that lived near there?
I'm sure I do. Cousins that lived near here, whose property would value be affected?
All right, I see people filling out some cards, so...okay, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. We have for you in this special meeting the commencement of the process for a proposed project at the above-stated addresses, essentially between Doran and Pioneer on Central Avenue. As you know, Central is in a state of change and metamorphosis in that you have approved, pursuant to the downtown specific plan, a number of mixed-use projects that changes the character from old antiquated office buildings that have reached the end of their functional life to a new round of investment and development, all within this downtown urban core. The process that we have set out for council review is the Phase One review of design. The council acts as the design review body, but Stage Two would be forthcoming if the council were to advance this project from this point. Stage Two would encompass a lot of the more specific environmental reviews that go above and beyond what the downtown specific plan had at a base EIR level. So, with that being said, we are submitting for your consideration what is perhaps the last large piece of readily developable land in the downtown specific plan area. Not that there aren't other large pieces of property in the downtown specific plan, but absent the ability of the city through redevelopment to assemble those sites, it really is incumbent on private property owners to do the assembly, and in this situation you have that circumstance. So, with that being said, our senior planner, Eric Kraus, is going to walk you through the specifics for this submittal, recognizing again this is the Stage One Design Review.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Please bring your cards up. And just for those of you who are new to the process, this gentleman works for the city of Glendale. Then the people who are developing the project will speak, their design team, the architect, landscape architect, et cetera, and then the general public will speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The proposed project consists of two independent buildings constructed on opposite sides of North Central and Doran Street. I put up a location map to give you an idea of where the project's going to be located, which is just down south of the 134 freeway along Central. Site A is located on the west side of Central Avenue, it's bounded by Doran Street on the north, Central Avenue on the east, Pioneer Drive on the south, and the Doran Gardens Residential Project and Mini Park on the west. Site A is roughly three and a half acres in size, is currently developed with two three-story medical office buildings with a surface parking lot, and a two-story multifamily residential building. Site B is located on the east side of Central, bounded by Doran on the north, Orange on the east, and a mid-rise office tower and parking structure on the south, and Central Avenue on the west. Site B is approximately two acres and is currently developed with a three-story medical office building with surface parking. Carmel Partners is proposing a total of 507 apartment units on the two sites. Site A building will include 315 units, and Site B building 192 units. Both proposed buildings are RAP development, which means the residential units wrap around an above-ground parking structure, and each level of the parking structure have direct access to the units in the buildings. Plans for both sites propose large open space amenities that include courtyards at the ground level and a pool on the top deck of each parking structure. Site A building will provide code-required parking of 456 spaces, that includes 32 guest spaces. Access to Site A will be provided on Central Avenue at the Doran intersection and on Pioneer Drive as well. Site B building would provide code-required parking, that's 275 spaces, with 20 guest parking spaces, and access to Site B will be provided roughly mid-block on Doran Street. Site A is primarily located within the transition district downtown specific plan, which permits a buy right maximum of four stories, 65 feet, and a 2.5 FAR. The building proposed for Site A is five stories, approximately 70 feet, with an FAR of approximately 2.4. As proposed, the building exceeds the buy-right number of stories and is just over the height limit. The developer intends to use the DSP open space incentive for the additional story in height. This incentive would permit a maximum of up to six stories, 95 feet, and a 3.0 FAR. The additional public open space is publicly accessible open space is going to be located primarily along Central Avenue, the south side of Pioneer, and then the southwest corner of property adjacent to Doran Gardens Mini Park. And that's intended to, the open space that's next to the Mini Park is intended to kind of expand the operation of the Mini Park itself, so that they would get a larger area there that's publicly accessible.
How many square feet is that going to be?
They're providing a total of additional public open space of 3,760 square feet. I'm not sure about the exact scale next to the park, but the developer will be able to address that question.
You say 2,000?
Excuse me?
3,000.
Correct, yeah.
Are they getting a bonus?
They are entitled to a bonus because of that, correct.
Are they proposing?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Is the bonus?
It's not, it's not, it's, well, the FAR, they're...
How much more FAR will they get?
Just point, actually, they're under the FAR.
It's the extra store.
So the FAR, and that is 2.5, and they'll be going, they're only at 2.4 on the FAR. So the incentive would give them an additional story and a little bit more in the height.
How much is a little bit more?
Up to five feet, but right now they're currently proposing about 66 feet or 68 feet, and they're allowed by right at a height of 65 feet. Site B is located within the Orange Central District, which permits a buy-right maximum of six stories, 95 feet, and a 3.0 FAR. The proposal for Site B, at five stories, approximately 70 feet, and 2.5 FAR, is within the development standards and permitted by rights, so they're not seeking any incentives for Site B. This time, staff recommends the city council approve the Stage One Design Submission for Sites A and B, subject to the principal urban designer's conditions and comments. And that concludes my presentation. At this time, I'd like to turn over to Niels Carter with the development team. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council. Very excited to be in front of you today, working in the city of Glendale again. Particularly excited about this project, the site, and the incredible development team that we have behind us, some fantastic architects and landscape architects are here I'm also proud to be a representative of Carmel. Carmel Partners is a real estate investment company based out of San Francisco. We are long-term holders of our assets. We self-perform, or we do in-house construction and also in-house management, and we have several thousand units under development in California today. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rodney Khan, who will tell you a little bit more about the project, and we're quite excited to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Niels. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. As staff mentioned, today we're requesting a Stage One conceptual design review only. Over the next several months, we'll be working on our environmental document, and our environmental document will look at all of the project impacts, everything from traffic to parking to noise to construction activities, and the list goes on. This environmental document will be circulated to other governmental agencies, not just the city of Glendale, but also Caltrans. It will also be reviewed, or able to be reviewed, by businesses in the area, by property owners, by residents, and by tenants. In fact, while this environmental document is being prepared, we would be happy to meet with any neighbors, businesses, or citizens to listen to their comments and answer their questions as well. For my part of the presentation, and I'll narrow it down based on staff's presentation, I wanted to talk a little bit about what's on the site right now, or the two sites, and what the context of the neighborhood is. As mentioned by staff, the first site, which is Site A, is about three and a half acres in size, currently has two larger medical office buildings on the corners of each site. In between is an expanse of paving, parking, and asphalt with very little landscaping. That will change with these projects. Mature landscaping will be introduced, along with creating usable public, private, and common open space, and as staff mentioned, highlighted by a large public open space area that both our architect and landscape architect will talk about in their presentations. North of our site, and you can see the image on the left-hand side, Slide A, is actually the tallest building in the city of Glendale. It's a 25-story office building, it's the Unum Building. West of that is a six-story parking structure, and also northwest of our site is the 18-story, two 18-story towers, it's called Park Towers. To the south of Site A is a fast-food restaurant with a parking lot. To the east is Site B and the proposed Verdugo Gardens project, and to the west are apartments, and on the southwest corner, the Duran Gardens Park. Site B, east side of Central, primarily sits around parking structures and mid-rise office buildings, in terms of the location or the proximity context. Both Site A and Site B are a few hundred feet away from the 134 freeway. The proximity to the freeway will allow our residents to come and go to the city of Glendale without having to go through other residential neighborhoods. It will also, as it relates to traffic, our traffic impacts, be lessened. The medical offices generate about six times the amount of traffic that a residential apartment building does. Finally, residential peak hour trips are also at different times than compared to medical offices or general offices which surround us. So, in total, our new project will actually lower the number of traffic trips and be off-peak times in terms of the traffic circulation and generation. But once again, this will be studied and proven in our environmental document and in our traffic studies. As it relates to parking, very briefly, we are fully parked according to the city code requirements. The site has 456 parking spaces for Site A, 32 are reserved for guests. For Site B, we have 275 spaces with 20 reserved per guest. We have ample parking for the residents and for their guests on our sites. In addition, we'll have short-term and long-term bicycle parking, along with, we are looking at shared car parking for our projects. In conclusion, we know that this is an important location, we know that. It is a gateway into our city. The downtown specific plan and the city of Glendale's vision is working. It's bringing in high-quality residential apartment buildings, it's bringing in new hotels, and overall, it's bringing very quality projects to the city of Glendale. I'll conclude by reminding that we know this is a Stage One Review. We're very interested in your comments and your feedback. Before I conclude, I would like to hand over, or hand out, one letter that we received from the Clover Company, who actually is the ownership for Whole Foods Markets. As you know, Whole Foods is moving into the office building, the two office, the two floors of the office building north of our site, and they've written a letter in support of the project and in support of Carmel Partners, and I'd like to hand that to you now.
Did you say that there was a project north of Site B?
Yes, that's the Verdugo Gardens project.
Do you remember how many units that was?
Approximately 225 units, somewhere in that range. It's a...
That's been approved, right?
That's been approved, and in fact, it will start its demolition in the next few weeks to start the construction. Yes, Councilman Weaver, you're absolutely right. You hit two key points. The first is, the study and the analysis has not been done to discuss it. Secondly, we will mitigate any parking or any traffic issues that are a result of our projects, yes.
Conspiracy to silence you, Mr. Weaver. And we're all in on it.
Okay, I don't need to repeat anything, do I?
No, I heard your question, that's fine. I'd like to, if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to our architect, R.C. Alley, and he'll give you a presentation, walk you through the project. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here before you. My name's R.C. Alley, I'm with Architects Orange. I'm going to do a brief presentation on the project, and to walk through the site plan and some of our planning principles, walk through the elevations and massing. These are our sites. I think this probably is a good overview of, you can see exactly what the existing conditions are. Again, you can see the medical office buildings, the large parking fields that are currently inhabit the site. These are the projects we're proposing. Our project is a high-density multifamily development, be in the heart of downtown Glendale. As envisioned by the downtown specific plan, this project brings quality of design and pedestrian-oriented features that will enhance the characteristics of the Orange Central and Central Transition Districts. Globally, we're proposing 507 dwelling units in two separate buildings, which will be linked by complementary and cohesive architectural palette. The site design is centered upon creating walkable street edges and overall massing consistent with the city of Glendale's vision for this area and adherence to the downtown specific plan. Overall, the project responds sensitively to the many urban design conditions around it. Both projects are RAP buildings, as our planner mentioned. But I would walk you through, if you haven't seen a RAP building, I'll walk you through quickly what that means. Basically, central parking garages that are fully encased by the buildings. If you live on the third floor, you drive into the garage, you drive through it, and you park on the third floor, and then you walk through a lobby into the corridor system of the building itself. The beauty of this is it puts all of our, it puts our courtyards on the ground plane. Unlike a podium project where everything is lifted up off the ground, our courtyards are all on the ground plane. I'm sorry, other than these which are on the roof, but I'll talk about those.
That's great, and I think this is the first time we've had a project designed like this in Glendale, up in the podium. It's the first occasion.
That's my understanding as well, sir. The great thing about this is the courtyards that are on grade, we can plant large plant material. We're right on grade, we're not building up on a podium deck, we're trying to plant material in planter boxes. Also, we do have pedestrian views in, so as pedestrians are walking by the project, we have openings into the building that will peer in directly into the courtyard. So again, we're not divorced vertically, as most of the podium projects are.
And if you go shopping, go to the market, and you come back with the bags, you've got a very short distance to your unit from where you park.
Yes, sir.
The elevators, center.
Yes, sir. It's very easy. As we worked on the project, we analyzed everything from travel distance from the parking spaces to the furthest dwelling unit. We have to make sure that they're very convenient for our residents. It's a very pleasant experience, it's a very well-accepted planning principle. Site A is on the western side of North Central and contains 315 units. The parcel sits adjacent to the public park to the west, which is in this location. Our North Central frontage is articulated to respond to the street based on uses. The project is anchored on the northeast corner by the leasing business and exercise facilities. The proximity of these spaces to the street corner promotes pedestrian access and walkability to the surrounding neighborhoods. Central to the project, opposite Doran, the Doran termination, is our vehicular entry at this location, it's a main vehicular and pedestrian entry as well. South of this entry, you can see we've pulled the building back at this location to buffer the dwelling units that are here and to create a urban courtyard. Both the north and south edges respond to the site adjacencies, with a tower to the north and the various commercial multifamily projects to the south and west. The western edge is articulated, you can see what we've done is a series of fingers along this edge to try to respect our neighbors. We've created basically courtyards, and we have a north-south passo at this location. There we go. Again, what we've done is we've created a north-south passo to connect Pioneer to Doran. You can see, we have a pedestrian connection at this location.
And that's open to the neighbors, obviously.
Yes, sir, it is. The southwest corner is adjacent to the Doran Garden Park, and it nits itself into the fabric of this park. I probably should have highlighted the park, but it is in this, it's in this location. From an amenity standpoint, we have, again, the north-south passo, the park connection, an engraed courtyard at this location, and this is an 11,000-square-foot roof deck that has a pool and club facilities for our residents. It's a great view observation deck as well, it's going to be a phenomenal amenity to this project. Site B is on the eastern edge of North Central, is located in the Central Orange District. It contains 192 units. The DSP envisions a residential street along Orange with ground-floor residential units with stoops and comfortable sidewalks. The parcel is designed to operate as a standalone project. We've anchored the prominent corner on North Central and Doran, again, with our community and club facilities at that location. Our northeast and western edges are pulled tight to the edges. We have stoops at the individual units along Orange and along North Central at this location. On the south side, we've pulled the site, we've pulled the building back and created an urban passo that connects Orange and North Central. This is a public connection. Again, engraed, we have an interior courtyard, this is an engraed courtyard, and there is a visual connection to Orange Street at this location. And again, significant roof deck with the amenity, pool, club facilities, all up on the roof. I'll show you a few before and after perspectives. This is the before and after view, looking south, looking south down towards North Central. Here's the before and after view, looking northeast down Doran. Get back, so you can see that again. This is an enlarged aerial view, looking northwest to our parcels. This is parcel A, this is Site A, this is Site B, and you can see the roof amenity decks up here. Again, they'll have, they're designed currently to have pools, club facilities, and they're great view decks, they're going to be, again, great amenities for the project. It's another aerial view, this is looking southwest. This is Site A, and this is the North Central Avenue facade. It's comprised of four distinct elements, which harmonize with and engage each other to create a balanced, articulated rhythm along the street. The North Central Pioneer corner is anchored with an iconic tower with a blade element. It emphasizes the commercial uses of this very important corner. The street level incorporates storefront windows into the public areas, consistent with the vibrant and eclectic urban street frontage envisioned by the North, along North Central Avenue. Various window configurations, including bay windows, window walls, punch windows, and corner window conditions, provide visual interest along this elevation. Duran Avenue terminates mid-block into the project, and this is what you'd see if you drive there. Basically, this is our vehicular pedestrian, our vehicular and pedestrian entrance into the project. We have a large rectangular framed roof deck area with a glass elevator lobby in this location to serve the residents and guests. The building massing is varied with material breaks, recessed elements, and incorporating penthouse lofts, which you can, whoops, sorry, which you can see in this location. The Pioneer facade, adjacent to the office building, incorporates graphic elements in a floating rectilinear articulation. The larger scale of the office building justifies the large-scale architectural elements. Note how the building steps down from Central to the left. Note how the building steps down from Central to the left, well, on the left, to the alley on the right, which currently has a high-density multifamily project to the right of our project, just off-screen. Again, you can see the stepping down.
May I ask you a question at that point?
Yes, sir.
I was going to bring it back. You have an alley parallel to Pioneer, perpendicular to Central, looks like you're going to vacate the lower half, dedicate its part-time to the Duran project. Then the alley that you're not vacating, that multi-apartment building to the west, where's that parking? It looks like, show it as future development or something, I'm trying to figure where they will park.
The site plan up.
Sorry, didn't make you.
No, no problem. Apparently, the alley actually is located approximately in this location right here.
Okay.
So we're relocating, we're abandoning the existing alley location, and we are relocating the alley to this location, so it connects.
Okay, there is alley there.
Yes, sir.
Because that's their parking lot, that.
Yeah, this, this project actually enters from right here.
So it's still there?
Yes, sir. We've been very cognizant about that, we've went out, we've walked.
I'm sure you were, but I.
Walked that project.
I didn't understand.
This is the south elevation, it's also, what we've done is, this is articulated very differently than the north elevation I just showed you. This elevation really interacts with much smaller buildings, they're smaller, lower-scale buildings, so we've really tried to bring the scale of the elements down on this, to really, to try to interface well with the existing neighbors. You can also see here where we stepped the building down, from North Central here, which has mezzanines, and then you can see we continue, we step it down, not only physically the roof line, but we're also stepping down the massing of the building as well. This view looks up, up the Paseo on Site A, and this would be looking, this is the pedestrian Paseo here, and at about this point is where the alley you were just asking about continues and turns to Pioneer. Basically, this, this Paseo is a series of common and public spaces that, again, connect north and south. This is where our building interfaces with the, with the existing mini-park. What we've done is, we've basically created a townhome scale at this location with stoops and covered entries. We think it works well, and it's very well scaled to the, to the park itself. Site B, this is the corner of North Central and Duran. You can, again, see our communities, our public spaces here, and we've emphasized them with, with storefront glazing. This is, if, the view if you look across North Central and up the Paseo between our building, this is on Site B, of course, up our building, between our building and the office building and parking structure that are to the south of our project. Here we look down Duran Street towards Site A, and you can see, again, the Site A termination at this location with the frame I discussed earlier. You can see the articulation of the buildings is very similar, but we've tried not to copy them, we wanted them to be, to be complementary to each other, but we wanted each building to have its own character as well. That concludes my presentation, we wanted to thank city staff for their hard work. We look forward to working with city staff as we move forward into Stage Two. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, next. Need your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name's Scott Baker, I'm a principal with Melendez Landscape Architects. Not very good without my visual aids, so just give us a moment. There we go. Okay. Pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. I don't want to be redundant from things that have been said before, but I want to hit on five key points associated with the landscape design for this project. One is the idea of a creation of a high-quality streetscape. The idea is for this project to really reinforce downtown Glendale as a walkable district. So what do we mean by that? We mean by consistent street tree canopy, high-quality sidewalks, setback landscape at the base of the building where appropriate, so that this is really about creating a very walkable, pleasant, high-quality experience for both residents, for people who are out shopping, and people commuting to work. The second thing, R.C. talked about the residential courtyards that are at grade. Here in Southern California, we have a tradition of courtyard housing. When that housing was done in the early part of the 1900s, it wasn't on a podium, it was at grade, and we have a chance to really revisit that here. So those courtyards, some of them actually address the outside edge of the building, on the street, on the alley, and then where they don't, there's a strong visual connection, this idea of the borrowed landscape. Even if you don't live here, you can walk down the street, and you will have a moment of view into these courtyards, and you will experience some of that landscape. And as was pointed out earlier, because we're on grade, these can be much more robust, much more high-quality courtyards than where we're building it on top of a slab, on top of a parking garage and whatnot. The third piece is, is the idea of these amenity decks that R.C. referenced as well. They're very generous. Because they sit on top of the parking garage, from the higher buildings around, obviously it diminishes the footprint, the apparent footprint of the parking garage, which is a great asset. They become visual amenities for those that are up on higher floors and adjacent buildings. But in addition to a pool, we're seeing these, these pool decks as much more highly amenitized, where there's outdoor barbecues, outdoor fireplaces, these really become kind of the, part of the social infrastructure for residential communities such as this. And we're excited about the idea that they are up above the units, they will have views, that's one thing Glendale boasts, is having fantastic views, and so we want to take advantage of that. The fourth piece, again, R.C. touched on it, is in Block B, this idea of a pedestrian Paseo. There is a similar type of experience here, but why this is important is it's mid-block. It shortens that north-south walk along Orange or along Central and creates a public passageway that splits the block, i.e. shorter blocks. We tend to sort of appreciate small blocks that happen in cities like Portland and things like that, and here's an opportunity to really shorten the size of the block for, again, reinforcing that idea of a walkable district. So we see this as a tree-lined pedestrian Paseo that would have some seating, the ability to walk through the block, and actually find a small kind of green respite within the city as a nice contrast to all things urban. And then finally, the existing park, which is a little bit clipped on the slide here, but this idea of an expanded open space that this project can provide. It's approximately, it increases the size of that park by approximately 50%, so it's about another sort of half of the park again. And what's interesting about the park design is, there's playgrounds, there's open area, and our observation of it was that it was perhaps missing a smaller scale, sort of the more intimate kind of a terrace area where you could sit beneath a trellis or beneath shade trees, rather than being fully out in the sun. It gets very warm here in the summer months, the day is kind of getting a little on the warm side too, so shade's important to it. So the ability to create a smaller piece, parents can watch their childrens on the playground from here, but this idea of creating a different scale, sort of the urban patio, if you will, on the park, that complements what's already happening in the park. And so we think this is a great asset, obviously it's an asset for the residents, but it's really an asset for the community, that we think adding the additional space will help to leverage that. Final note on planting, we do an awful lot of work here in Southern California, we've done a fair amount of work in Glendale. We're very conscientious of a plant palette that's sustainable. We tend to sort of gravitate to the materials that don't need a lot of trimming and blowing and mowing and those types of things. So we look for a plant palette that is low water use, highly sustainable, but distinctly Southern California, and we have the benefit of a great selection of plant material, and so that would be how we would approach the landscape here as well, one that we don't have to have mowers out in the courtyards at 7:00 a.m. on Thursday mornings, landscapes that are much more endearing than that. With that, I'll close, and any questions on landscape, we'd be happy to respond.
As you move through the process, I would hope that you show more of the Paseo itself. I'd hope you really make it a much more kind of comfortable place up near Pioneer, so it becomes more than just a passageway, but maybe in bringing in some seating, something that'll take you from Doran to Pioneer, and, you know, you feel like, might even see people sitting along the way.
Absolutely, I think, and forgive me for not mentioning that, I think we see this as a sequence of spaces, it's not just a shoot. We want people to linger, we want people to have sort of moments, different types of moments. Shade under a tree, the type of place where you could go and have a conversation, that place where you could go and play, where you can find some time on your own. It is about creating those experiences within the public realm, and that would occur not only in, south of Site B, but certainly this whole linear connection along here is an important part of creating high-quality public open space.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it for the team? Okay. All right, I have a number of cards, and I'll give everyone three minutes to speak. I'll start with Michael, last name Michael, I'm not sure, and then followed by Gregor Gregorian.
I'm Michael McHale with RE/MAX Commercial in Glendale. I work with Sam Minookian in the Commercial Division, and I'm the one responsible for getting national tenants into Glendale. Companies like Starbucks and Chase, I have to convince them to open up their next prototype instead of Pasadena, to pick our city. People like Sam Nazarian to open up the next SLS hotel here as opposed to Burbank. So the only way I can do this is by getting projects like this developed in this town, bring in the foot traffic, to bring in the confidence that they can come and do same thing here. I ask you to please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregor Gregorian, followed by Sam Minookian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Gregor Gregorian, I'm the president of the Armenian-American Chamber of Commerce, Greater Los Angeles Chapter. I'm here today to speak in support for the Carmel Partners Projects. We believe these residential apartment projects will benefit the community of Glendale and add new quality apartment units for its citizens and people looking to move into the town. We especially like the new public open space next to the city park. It will be a welcoming addition to the neighborhood. We also like the location being close to the freeway, and the residents not needing to drive through the city to get to their homes. A new project will beautify this gateway location into our city, which is something that the area needs. We are also very appreciative that this project is being privately financed and will bring new jobs and new residents that will eat, shop, and spend their money at the existing businesses in town. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on these important projects for our city.
Thank you. Sam Minookian, followed by Ed Tomassio.
Good afternoon, my name is Sam Minookian, I am the director of the Commercial Division for RE/MAX, and I wanted to thank you, thank the staff, and most importantly, thank the developer for wanting to take a risk and basically develop a project like this. And one of the things that I wanted to point out, that all the other projects that we have in the pipeline work, if, they all work together in the sense of bringing the foot traffic within our downtown. Years ago, I think we sat and went over this zoning and tried to promote exactly what is taking place. So as our city manager was saying that this is one of the last large parcels, I hope not. I hope we have larger developments. I know, and the other thing that we should keep in mind, we're talking about five and a half acres, and roughly about, the way I see it, two, two projects. So I want to make sure we don't get caught up with this number of, number of units being high. Personally, I think it should have been higher, but I'm sure Mr. Minookian wouldn't like that, so. But I really believe the residents in these projects are going to help the remaining developments, so please, 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 please approve it, because especially what's there right now, it's horrible. It looks ugly, and compared to what we're going to get, it's a no-brainer. Thank you, please approve this project.
Thank you. Ed Tomassio, followed by Bonifacio Castillo.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. Actually, I was here last week also, I didn't know I was supposed to, but I have some more different questions, I will not repeat those, I'm assuming the developer will address those. I heard that they will be doing a full EIR, environmental impact report, which would include noise, traffic, safety and everything during construction and after construction. As a Glendale resident, I already know that those areas are extremely jammed. So to compare it and say, okay, well, commercial traffic versus residential traffic, nobody comes home and stays home, they go out. And, okay, they, some people may, may walk, but that's not too many people that walk within a couple of blocks. And then what we're taking out are medical facilities, that a lot of older people depend on that, they are being driven there, which now they have to be driven to different parts of the city or none in Glendale. So, and I hope that part of this EIR, there's a soil contamination study, I know there were some potholing being done, because obviously these were old lands and there may be some contamination. My major concern is, again, safety for the school, I didn't hear anything about that as to what's being done, how that's going to be taken care of, because traffic will be diverted there. I myself am escaping Brandon Central, and I go there, and there's, Columbus School is a big school and with a lot of kids, we don't want to have more accidents and deaths of children, excuse me, children over there. And I, I don't know who, I think it was Mr. Weaver that mentioned that for, they should be providing more parking, I did not hear how. They said yes, but is that by cutting down on the number of apartments?
If necessary, that's to be determined.
Is that Glendale code, one and a half or so?
It's according to code right now, but when it undergoes an analysis for the EIR, then it'll have to be adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Anyway, those were my main concerns, the entire area being jammed, and the safety, and the people's access to medical facilities, which are not going to be available. And by the way, these housings are nice, but I'm sure they're not going to be cheap, so it's not going to be the regular people or the lower-middle class that's going to be able to afford, I didn't hear anything about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonifacio Castillo, followed by Timothy Sales.
Hi, my name is Bonifacio Castillo, I live at 323 West Doran Street, which is part of the residential areas that are directly impacted in the proposed site. I understand and I appreciate the economic impact that it's going to have on the city. However, I did not hear absolutely anything about those families, including myself, that have lived there for the last 20 years in those buildings, and along with other families that have lived there a lot longer. I know of a particular family whose mother is bedridden. I did not hear absolutely anything, so I would appreciate if the council takes into consideration those 20 families that have lived there the longest. Thank you very much, and in consideration with that, please do not approve this project, and if you do, consider those families as well.
There's an apartment building being demolished as well, is that in the project?
Based on what I've seen, there's, there's two addresses, there's 323 West Doran Street, which is where I live, which is right next, next to the Duran Park, and then there's 321, which they did get the notification of this, but I didn't, I had to find out when I was driving by, and I saw the notice. So I can see the full consideration from the developer about those families, so I do ask the council to consider that as well. I have two kids who go to school, who have been going to Glendale Unified School, I lived here for a very long time, and I would like the city council to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Sales, followed by Javier Rodello. Thank you. Timothy Sales, followed by Javier Rodello.
Mayor and council people, good afternoon. I'm Timothy Sales. I'm here today speaking on behalf of HHP Doran LLC Heritage Housing Partners. We were very fortunate to work with the city of Glendale on the development of Doran Gardens immediately to the west of the site, including the Doran Mini Park. And I just wanted to tell you, we're doing great there. We got 20 folks moved in and 40 sold. So, people really want to live in the neighborhood. It's an exciting place, and this looks like a very high-quality development. I just wanted to say a couple of things, because all these things happen on the margins. We can make everything a little bit better on the margins. You know, there was no mention of this in the staff report, but there, I built, from what my understanding is, there's an upzoning and general plan amendment that's required for the site, which is a big change for the neighborhood on part of the site. So, there's, there's something in it for the city, and I think there's a big investment the city's made in the neighborhood. And I just want to make sure that the city gets the best possible return on its investment. And the one thing that we're concerned about is just how the city, how the, how the development interfaces with the park and interfaces with Doran Gardens specifically. We appreciate the urban designer and planners' comments from the city to try to decrease density adjacent to the park. We'd like to look at that some more, and we'll participate in the environmental review process. Currently, I think it's four stories next to the park with some setbacks. You know, we went from one story to two story to three stories as we interface with Doran Street. We'd like to look at maybe going from three to four to five stories as this project interfaces with the adjacent development and park. In addition, you know, there are, it's great to see that the developer's going to be investing in the project and developing it and keeping it as an investment for a long period of time. It wasn't clear to me exactly whether those paseos are truly public space or if they're private land that's allowed for passage. I hope they're public parks to give the maximum access to the community. And given the ongoing relationship that the developer will have with the site and having experienced sort of limited resources the city has for ongoing maintenance of parks, I would seriously consider the city to consider working with the developer, maybe make a contract with them for maintenance of these areas. If they have people on site who are already maintaining their own development, that's probably something very easy for them to do and might be a big benefit to the community. Because with 500 more units at 92 dwelling units per acre, it's a significant change. We're generally supportive of development as developers. We just want to make sure it's done as well as possible, and the community is able to, to benefit as greatly as possible. So, in summary, we would like you, we keep looking for us to be involved and supportive of the project and making sure it's as good as possible. And consider that, that idea of maybe having them work on a maintenance agreement for both the Doran Mini Gardens Park as well as whatever they add to it, and make sure that the city staff's able to make sure they're involved in design so it all works together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Javier Rodello, followed by David Basulto.
Hi, everyone. My name is Javier Rodello, and I live in the apartment complex 321 West Duran, Apartment 4. I lived there for 20 years. I, like my neighbor that spoke earlier, my mom lives there. She's a 62-year-old elderly lady. And like other people have spoke, the medical buildings across the street are a very important need for the elderly here in Glendale, especially elderly being a large population here in Glendale. They're very helpful and they're accessible for them, for their needs, for their medical needs. Also, another thing, I have been living there and I noticed that they built, I think it's a garden, Doran Gardens for middle-income people. I was really excited when that came in, but unfortunately, the prices of land have come up and they're not really accessible to the middle class. And as you've seen, it's been there for a year, and it's really empty. There's no one living there and it's, you know, land that is lost. And that's another concern that I'm afraid that, there's a lot of apartment complexes that are being built here in Glendale, and that's great. It makes the city look beautiful and everything. But unfortunately, what is affordability for the lower income or the elderly that live here in Glendale? I mean, this building is beautiful and everything, and I'm not going to deny it, but it's displacing a lot of elderly citizens or residents of Glendale. And I don't see any solution for where are we going to place elderly people or residents of Glendale. And if anything, any medical buildings are going to be replaced or for them to have access. And then also, a lot of the apartment complexes that I've seen and joining streets here in the neighborhood are empty. I mean, it's beautiful that we're getting all these beautiful apartments for new residents, but it's been years and they're empty. And they're not accessible for the common resident. So, that's one concern that I would like to be addressed. And for that reason, I feel that you should not consider this project. Thank you.
Thank you. David Basulto, followed by Dennis Di Pietro.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm David Basulto, resident of the 321 West Duran. I was wondering, like my neighbor said, where is all the elderly, elderly people going to go? Like, the offices in the front, the buildings, the dentals, the dentists, the doctors, they're all helping the community out. It's not like, it's not like they're just there for show. Like, they're all there. They've been there for many years. And many years, I've been living there for 15 years of my life. And they, they've been saving lives. Like I said, there's a lot of elderly residents in Glendale that have been saving lives for years and years and years. And where's going to be, where are, where are all the doctors going to go? Where's the dentist going to go? Where's the, where's all the memories going to go? Are we going to like, where are we going to go? Are we going to be removed? Are we going to be living in the alley right there? Like, what's, what's going to happen to us?
Okay, thank you. Dennis Di Pietro, followed by Linda Lee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and honorable council people. My name is Dennis Di Pietro. I'm not here on behalf of the Glendale Chamber. As the chair of the Glendale Chamber, though, is studying this project and very closely, and will come up with an official rule. I'm here as a Glendale property owner. And from a micro, from a macro scale, it seems like the project is appropriate to the location, the FAR, the density, and also that it is projects like these that are self-sustaining economically that help the city in developing a tax base to help those other issues that come about in terms of displacement and assist the city in that respect. A healthy economy will help the city have the tools to do what the other things that it needs to do. From a micro scale, the, and having been a member of the Citizens Advisory Group for the Downtown Specific Plan, there were a number of wonderful tools in that toolbox that were placed for developers, such as density bonuses and so on. And I see that the, that the developer is taking advantage of one of those in terms of the slight amount of height that they're requiring. And I urge staff and the developer to, to use those incentives. They were, they're meant there to make these kinds of projects more viable and more successful. And again, urge that dialogue to continue and for staff to, to work with the developer to, to use as many of those tools in the, in the incentive toolbox that can be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Lee, followed by Chi Luan.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How are you? My name is Linda Lee. I am a commercial real estate broker with the Charles Dunn Company here in Glendale. I've worked in Glendale for about 13 years, and I have loved every bit of it. I am here to talk about the office market here in Glendale. And as you know, there is 1.3 million square feet of vacant office space here in Glendale. There has been over a million square feet of office space vacancy here in Glendale for the past decade. And I am in support of a vibrant downtown Glendale, which I believe will have a direct impact on the office, office space vacancy here in Glendale. I would like to see those vacancies filled up with prominent businesses who have elected to go to our neighboring cities, such as Pasadena, Burbank, and downtown because of the vibrancy of those communities. And I think that this development would add to that vibrancy here in downtown Glendale, which would increase a certain cachet that Glendale would offer, and therefore attract those businesses. So, for those reasons, I am here to support this development and hope that you will approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chi Luan.
Thank you. And thank you for all of you. I'm here, one is a residency-
Name your, your name for the record.
Oh, my name's Chi Luan. And I'm a residency of the Glendale, and I am also business owner of Glendale. I heard so many wonderful things about this project, so I don't need to repeat. But, as residents, as business owner, I just here to express my thinking and my feeling and for your reference. First of all, they mentioned about, they are going to do traffic, parking, and the noise research to see how good they are. But they didn't mention about crime, the safety. Right behind is little school. So, apartment, we know people come in and out. How about the research for the crime rate? So, the, you know, according to the research and everything, the crime rate do go up when people flow in and flow out. That's one. And second, traffic. They say the residents, 500 apartment people, were in and out 134, easy, without problem, without jammed. Look at the offering right now. If you go to Central, it's very difficult to go in and out, no matter what time it is. Add 500 apartment. I hope that study will come out positive for that. Because apartment people is that 24/7. Sorry, I have a little cough. And the second, and the third is that I heard quite often the mention about medical, dental. Right now, this property, of course, does not look as nice as the new one. But, the parking lot provide all the Glendale elderly, old citizen to come in and out easily for medical and dental care. And this is only one property right now in Glendale provide that. I am a dentist located at 607 North Central Building, and all my patient is Glendale, I, I should say 95% is Glendale. Elderly people come for my dental office for, for the dental treatment. They come because easy parking, easy, easy for them get to the office. And compared to any other places, it's just provide them with just very, I should say, prime surface. And one more thing I want to say, back in 1988, I was attending the council meeting in Montipar. The same thing, they want to build apartment, condos around Montipar. They say we revitalize Montipar downtown area. But look now, the traffic, everything jammed Montipar. Nobody even want near there because it was horrible. So, I know this is prime land of Glendale. And I know you all will make good decision for our Glendale residents, just like, like I learned when I came to the United States, you know, it's for the people, by the people, and of the people. I know you will. I just expressed some of my feelings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are the last cards. Is there someone from the team that wants to address some of them?
Good afternoon again, Rodney Khan. And I'll address a few of the items that I heard the speakers make. First of all, as it relates to the environmental study, the comments that I made as to the analysis that's taking place, I said traffic, I said parking. I could have listed about 15 or 20 different items that are required to be reviewed in environmental document. So, it will include safety, it will include crime, it will include the soils conditions and the contamination. It will include all of the items that were brought up, in addition to the ones I brought up, in addition to all of the items that are required in the checklist. So, just because I didn't state them, the 15 or 20 of them, does not mean we won't study them. Rather, we will study them as well.
It's probably also worth recognizing, just for the folks in the audience, who, this may be a new set of terms and concepts in terms of the EIR process. There is a baseline EIR done for the Downtown Specific Plan that all of our projects, this one included, would be tearing off of. So, the final document probably is what is either a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration with all the various mitigations, the steps that will be taken by the developer to address any conditions that are found. But I didn't want folks to walk away from the meeting thinking that there will be a brand-new EIR done, because I don't believe that is the case under the Downtown Specific Plan. It'll be some document tearing off of that.
Correct. Mr. Cho, what we'll do is we'll do the initial study, and part of that initial study will determine the type of environmental document we do. But in addition to that, we will have specific studies that will address these issues that have been brought up. The next item, as it relates to the developer of the Duran Gardens and how we interface with them, we would welcome sitting down and talking to them about that. We would welcome working with them on the project. We think that since their investment, and we think it's an excellent project as well with the park, we would be happy to do that. Also, I'd like to add that we have been meeting with the City Parks Department already to talk about this public open space and how it relates to Duran Gardens Park. So, whether it's a maintenance agreement or anything else that comes up and about, that will be something that we would work through and with the City of Glendale Parks Department to come to fruition. One of the gentlemen mentioned about a, the, there's some empty apartment buildings. I think that the Carmel Partners has looked at this from a strategic point of view. Obviously, they're investing a significant, significant amount of money into our community. They've done the research, they've done the studies, and obviously, they feel that this project in this location will be fully occupied. Two other comments. First, where will all the doctors and dentists go? Hopefully, they'll go to some of our vacant office buildings, as we heard from Linda Lee, that we have a large, large amount of vacant space in our offices. Some of those buildings have converted from general office to medical office, and maybe more of them will as a result of this. We are hoping that that's what takes place. In fact, one of the projects I think I worked on is about a few hundred feet from this site, that was general office that converted to medical office. So, hopefully, those doctors will go a stone's throw away from where they are right now. I'll conclude my remarks on those comments. We think, obviously, this is a very important project. This is creating new homes, 500 new homes, for Glendale residents and people that want to move to the city. And we ask for your approval here today. Thank you very much.
I have a question. There are a number of speakers that live in the apartment buildings, 20 families it appears. What can the developer do to try to ease that transition if project moves forward?
Mayor Quintero, I think what we do is, is the, the city of Glendale has requirements as it relates to apartments and people needing to move out of them because of projects, whether it be relocation funding or assisting them finding other units. We'd be happy to participate in that with the city, along with our development team.
If this project moves forward, this is first step, do you have an anticipation of what month, year, these apartments would be vacated? Would it be six months from now, 18 months from now?
Mayor Quintero, we do not. And one of the reasons I can't answer that question is because our next step is to go into our environmental document, as I mentioned. I don't know how long that process will take. But you could just imagine, we're going to go through that, we're going to have to come back again for stage two. We're going to have to go into plan check. As you know, it's not a quick process here in the city of Glendale. And then we would talk about timeframes. We don't know now, but once we set up a schedule, we'll certainly inform you and the public what that is.
All right. I'll close the public hearing and take comments. I'll with Mr. Weaver.
I'll jump around a little. First off, I'm shocked when I hear somebody 62-years-old is mentioned as elderly. I'm 10, more than 10-years-old than that. I don't feel elderly yet, so that's a shock. Believe me, 62 is young. As far as the medical offices, I've had doctors in all three of the, those- As far as the medical offices, I've had doctors in all three of the, those buildings. And what I see today with our three major hospitals is there's more medical offices moving near those major hospitals or associated with it. In fact, up near my place, I have a medical building, or I don't think it was medical, it's now be refurbished, and it's going to be medical offices near Adventist Hospital. So there is a trend to get near the hospitals all over the town, and not just our city. I know that an off-ramp is gonna, off-ramp lane is going to be added coming off Central from the 134 East, we're going to use leftover fronts from the flyover bridge that hasn't been done yet, that'll give additional turn lane coming south. I happen to believe that my observations, the residential is less traffic than the medical buildings do. Residential are leaving at all times, it's not jammed at one time. I presume a lot of the residents that are working in Glendale in the financial district or Whole Foods or whatever are going to walk to work. When you're a block away from Brant, why are you going to get in a car and drive a block to park? So I think when the dust settles and the people that move in there, you will see that Also, I talked to developers earlier, or another time earlier, and I suggested very strongly consider putting a pharmacist into the structure. We're going to have 300 or 400 potential clients, well, that's units, so maybe 800, 1,000 residents there that are going to need pharmaceuticals at times rather than drive, put a pharmacist in there. You probably can make a living right in that structure, that would serve the surrounding community too, wouldn't have to go any further than they are now. I know we did the master EIR for downtown specific plan, but you have, you'll have to do specific ERs for projects. The last thing, because we've taken heat up here on this statement that you're overbuilding, you're crowding the place, and how can you do this? Why is everybody coming to Glendale? And one, this location is a block away from the freeway, you're not going down into Central Glendale, it's prime location next to a freeway, which will make it much easier and reduce a lot of traffic. And as why is coming here, I asked different developers, why Glendale? What I'm hearing is, this is an extremely desirable city to build in. All private funding, but they're building here because they can recognize an economic return in their investment. Pasadena and Burbank are higher, more costly. I'd say we're too high here, but not compared to those other cities. And we sit here, the precipice of Disney building, stage, phase 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, another 1,500 workers, and they're about two miles away from this location. Market is there, the people will come, as Brand Boulevard activates as a lively downtown, and they have more people wanting to live in Glendale. Housing be there, they'll be coming, and they will walk to downtown to Brant and enjoy themselves. So yeah, there's some more work to do, this is stage one. It's a good start, it followed the codes that we worked on for 10 years to make happen. I can't see any reason not to. And one last thing, overbuilding, where are they ISIS? I asked about ISIS that is right off the, off the 5 freeway at Colorado, which I would consider not as desirable as a lot of other locations in Glendale. And their rentals, projections, they're way ahead of the number of units they thought they would fill by now. Were that desirable, the people are coming in, so you could say overflow, but they're spending their money here, and if we design correctly and utilize the traffic patterns and everything we have learned about traffic flows in the city, we should not have the impacts of some think that we're going to have. We're using modern ways of designing traffic flows, whatever. So I have every confidence that we're doing the right thing, and this is just another step. I expect someday Central will be primarily in the northern part, a residential street. It's about everything down to Lexington or whatever, it'll be a hotel, an apartment building, or whatever. It'll be the buffer between the low family housing and the lively downtown on Brant and the financial district, so I think it's great, so all for it.
Well, I'll miss those medical buildings, because I've always thought they were very cool. But there is a lot of medical space in the city, and there's more under construction, I know, and there are a lot of conversions, so I'm not worried about doctors and dentists being able to find new spaces, particularly, I think they can. I'm generally in favor of the project, I do have some concerns, I'm looking forward to seeing them addressed in the EIR process. Just so people understand, this is just the very beginning of this process, really the only thing we're looking at is the design. After their environmental document is done, which will take many months to do, then we'll have a better understanding of any impacts from traffic and anything else. My biggest concern is guest parking. I don't know what the code says and what the rationale is behind it, but at some point, I'd like to hear more about that, because it seems to me with that many apartments that you would need more than 20 or 30 guest parkings for each building. So that's something I would like to hear more details about. I do hope that you work with Heritage Housing so that we can look at that park and how all of that's going to work, and also with the city. I'm assuming that since it's your property still, the maintenance will be done by you, but I want to, you know, hear more details about that down the road. Given that there's a 26-story building and a 16-story building framing these, I think the height is very appropriate. I think it's small, actually, for what we're doing in that area. I wouldn't have a problem if it were taller, to me, that's not the issue. I know that there's worries with the on-ramp and the off-ramp of the 134, and again, we'll be seeing that, that addressed in the EIR process. I do know from experience, because I go down Central all the time, I live above Central, that sometimes you have to, you know, have a little backup because of the 134, but after that during the day, you often have a bigger backup because of the medical building, cars going in and out, that's a very high intense building. And for an apartment building, people may come and go, particularly in the morning, but during the day, you don't have crowds of people going in and out of apartment buildings, you just don't. But you do for medical buildings, so I think that for the residents who live in the area, that this building, I believe, will cause less traffic for them than the medical building has, but again, the EIR will show us whether that's true. The on-ramp and the off-ramp for the 134, both on Brant and Central, I'm told, the issue is the Caltrans signaling with the, you know, what do you call the thing, the signal that stops and meters the cars, I guess it's the meter, more than the intersection. Those meters cause big backups, particularly on Brant Boulevard, so I don't know if that's something that as a city, I don't know who I'm looking at, but as a city, you know, maybe something we can address. I think it's, you know, we tend to have more signaling problems than we do problems in terms of the amount of cars that go through. And right now with the construction, we've had some real signaling problems there, even at times when there's very little traffic. So I think there are ways of mitigating and addressing those sorts of impacts. For the doctors and the dentists out there who are listening, it was referenced, but there is a new medical building under construction right now near Glendale Adventist Hospital, I think it's on Chevy Chase Boulevard. So, and that's, I don't know how many units it has, but it's a five-story building, maybe? So it, four, three-story building, so it has quite a lot of, and it's a big building, so it has quite a lot of space, so that's something to take a look at. So those are my concerns, I, you know, I'm waiting to comment on those until we do CDIR, I think that's the proper time, but in terms of the design and the direction of this, I'm in favor of it. I do very much appreciate the open space of being added to the park, and also that paseo, as long as we can address whatever security concerns there might be about having a paseo between, you know, behind these buildings, so that that doesn't become an issue, whether it's cameras, which I certainly hope you have, to make people feel safe going there in the evenings. I think that's, you know, something else to look at, but something that could be a really wonderful amenity for the whole neighborhood, because it's something that the neighborhood will be able to use. I'm glad that the city does have help for people who might be displaced by this project, although I believe they'll have quite a lot of time, because I can't imagine anything's going to happen within a year, so quite a while to look, but there is a process through the city for, for help with that. And, you know, I will say that the more apartments that are built, I would think the lower the prices go. Right now, we have a real problem, because there's just not enough apartments for people. And we've also built quite a lot of affordable housing in the city. I don't know for a fact, but I'm going to guess, just given the amount of apartments that have been built, which really aren't that many in the last five years, and there's the Americana, there's a couple on Broadway, I would bet that there's probably been more affordable housing built in Glendale than market rate housing. And yes, and the staff is saying, yes, that's true. And as a city, we can't be a healthy city unless we have market rate housing as well as affordable housing. We can't just have affordable housing, and that's what's happened over the past five or six years, is that really only affordable housing's been built in Glendale, in terms of apartment buildings. So this is an adjustment, and I think what's frightening people is that it's all happening, it seems like it's all happening at once, but when you think that nothing's been built for the past five or six years in terms of apartments, or very little, if you would spread that out, I don't think people would, it would have that same impact. And at the same time, Pasadena's built, I think I heard, 7,000 units, 5,000 units? How many? About 7,000 units in how many years? In eight years, Pasadena's built 7,000 apartment units, 7,000. Has it hurt their city? Is Pasadena a horrible place to go? Is their traffic out of control? No, people are still going there, but what it's done, those 7,000 units, have made a downtown that's very dynamic, very interesting, and made a city that is thriving. So you can't have that, you can't have that growth, if you do it correctly, without having terrible impacts. So again, I agree with the city manager that this is the last large piece of land that's available in the downtown without somebody really going through a lot of hoops to tie properties together, so we may not be seeing one of these again for quite a while, but at this point, given that it's a phase one approval, I will vote in favor of it today.
Manukian.
I will not vote for it, I think it's too dense, and just in that area, there's over 800 units coming in such a small area, and such, an area that is very heavily impacted during traffic times. So I believe that I've built a number of high-income apartments over the past three, four years, including the Americana, including the Broadway, all over the place, and there's approximately 2,000 units. With this, it's going to be, seems like there's 3,000 units coming in the area, if not more. What I'm afraid of is that 10 years from now, we're going to sit and say, oh, shucks, look at what we've done. Same thing that we did when they built in the 80s all the apartments in the, in the south of Glendale. We're going to have a dense, dense downtown, I disagreed with it from the beginning, and I disagree with it now. So I will not vote for it, and if it's the design, I think it's too rectangular, so I don't like it.
All right, I do support the project, and I support downtown housing in general. This would bring us into the 2,000 range, is that right? Okay. But the first thing that concerns me is those families that have lived there upwards of 20 years, when speaker said 15, someone else said 20, and so I want to make sure that they're taken care of, and I think it needs to be done early in the process. So I recommend that the developer and the city get together with the tenants, and the tenants reach out to see what's available and how we're going to go about this process. I do think we have time, I can't imagine this is going to happen within the next year, but the whole point is, it looks like it's inevitable, this is the first step, there's other steps, there may be modifications, there may be different directions that this project takes, but it seems to me that those apartment buildings, as well as the, as the medical office building are going to be displaced. So I'm really concerned that some of the folks that have lived there all these years are treated with dignity and have the opportunity to, to move into units in that neighborhood or somewhere else in Glendale. I drove by the apartment building yesterday and drove through the parking lot, parking lots for the different medical buildings. So the units themselves are, you know, somewhat drab, but they're in fairly decent shape, and whatever it is, these are homes for these, for these tenants, they've been there for a long period of time. I totally disagree with the speaker that said renters come in and out, and somehow there's crime associated with renters, that's, that's just not the case. Having said that, I absolutely support the project, I think this is what we're looking for here in the downtown. It's going to be a lot of synergy once these units are built. A lot of the people that reside in these units are not going to, they're actually going to be working in the downtown. I went to do my, my end-of-the-year retirement account funding, and the person, a younger, a younger financial type, I asked him, hey, where do you live? And I told me where he lived, and then when I mentioned the units, he was already aware of them, and he was very happy that they were being built, because he was planning him and his significant other. The minute that they find some units that they like, or a unit that they like, they're moving to downtown Glendale, they don't want to commute from the west San Fernando Valley. So I think there's going to be a lot of that, and in addition to the fact that these are basically empty parking lots that are now going to have people living, as well as the hotel that we're going to build. So I want to thank the development team and the staff for putting this together. I'm sure it's going to be a very positive experience for everyone. But like I say, I'm concerned with the, the people living in those units.
Just a matter of, if I could add?
Other comment?
One point, those residents, people that came, staff has taken all the notes, they have the videotape, so any comment you made, it's been captured and will probably be addressed in the EIR, so don't fear your words have been left in the dark, we've heard you all.
Well, and they can continue to speak, this is the first hearing, there's a second hearing, and there's, continue to be input.
Next one in, you'll have a lot more to, to look at, to give comments on, if there are comments. Maybe your comments will all be addressed, I don't know, we'll find out.
And I do agree with the comment on the public space in terms of, of the maintenance and so forth. I mean, this is now going to be a good-sized park, maybe we can work together. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to A and B.
Second.
Other comments? Roll call.
Council members Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian, Najarian, Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Who we adjourn for the council?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. There are?